Thank you. For the roll call, in order to establish a quorum, we'll start with Mayor Owens.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Selby. Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Borland.
Here.
And Commissioner Burke. All right, Mr. Mayor, you have established a quorum.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and get started. Maybe they'll show up. Go ahead, James.
Thank you, sir. Item number one is for action. That's for the mayor to call the meeting to order.
Yeah. We'll call the meeting to order. The recess session in the Manio Commissioners. Call it to order.
Thank you, sir. Item number two on the agenda, this section is called Presentations and Reports. This is for information. We'd like to start the item number 2A. This is introduction of new employees. I am very pleased today as we introduce two new employees to the Board of Commissioners, as well as to the Manio community, including those people watching at home. First up is Mr. Dustin Leary. Mr. Leary is a graduate of Columbia High School here in eastern North Carolina. Prior to his employment by the Town of Manio, Mr. Leary had extensive experience in the private sector, with firms located from Columbia to Manio. Specific to his new position, Dustin had experience driving trucks, performing safety inspections, and much more. In fact, Dustin Leary came to us with his Class B Commercial Driver's License, or CDL, already in hand. Mr. Leary is serving as a general maintenance worker in the Public Works Department. Next up, we also have on hand this evening, Mr. Cameron Morris. Mr. Morris is a graduate of Manio High School, and he also earned an Associate of Arts degree at the College of the Albemarle. Cameron has worked for nearly a decade right here in Manio, originally starting with a local business right downtown, followed by employment in the public sector with a nearby organization. Cameron Morris has gained a range of experience from grounds maintenance to customer service to work in facilities. Mr. Morris is serving as a utility maintenance worker in the Water and Sewer Department. We are excited to have these two hardworking people join the team here at the town, and we wish them all the best for a long and productive career serving the Manio community. Gentlemen, thank you. And if there are any questions aboard, we're happy to answer them. If not, if you'd like us to proceed, we can move to the next item on the agenda.
No, I just wish the whole board could be there to say them and congratulate them, look at them personally, but I'm not able to, and I don't think many other Commissioners are either. So congratulations to both of you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Next up on the agenda, this is item 2B. These are the department head reports. For our listening public, we'll let folks know that the written department head reports from each department, those are located on the town website at manionc.gov. It's always fun to see what's going on every single month, all the things going on behind the scenes, and we'll make sure the folks get a chance to look through those. As we, once we get past this pandemic, we'll return to our previous approach of actually having a slideshow and each department head present to the board and to the public here in the meeting room. However, in the meantime, though, we do want to continue to spotlight departments, and our spotlight video this week is from the Manio Police Department. My colleague here who's facilitating the meeting will go ahead and bring this short video up to show what's going on behind the scenes there in law enforcement.
My name is Douglas Moore. I'm an investigator at the Manio Police Department, and I've been here for seven years. Prior to this, I worked in Wisconsin, and there I worked on a drug task force. And over the last year, I've had an opportunity to train with the Drug Enforcement Administration, otherwise known as the DEA. And I got to spend two weeks at the academy in Quantico, going through their clandestine lab training, and then clandestine, dynamic entry to clandestine lab training. And then we had an opportunity this year, we actually hosted in Manio, the two-week DEA Drug Investigator Course. Drug investigations have always been a passion of mine to get drugs off the street and help everybody have a safe community. And my strong belief is education is the key. When we go to training, we get to bring information back and share it with other officers, and share it with the community on what to look for. And if unfortunately we come across an issue with drugs in the community through the investigation techniques, then we know how to handle those investigations and quickly rid the problem in the town. The first drug investigation class that I went to was back in, right around 2000 in Wisconsin. I went to the week-long Drug Investigator Course, put on the Wisconsin Department of Justice there. And that just started from the very basics, how to start a drug investigation, how to work with informants, how to properly document investigations. From there, when I came here, it was something I wanted to continue with. So we actually continued that with starting the CANON program to get drugs off the streets, and also used it as a public relations tool to get into the schools and other community events to talk to people about drug investigations. And from there, my career has just furthered with the opportunities to train with the Drug Enforcement Administration. So within the last year, I've had an opportunity to go to what's called clandestine lab training. During that training, we got in-depth to what clandestine labs are, as far as like a methamphetamine lab or butane lab. Methamphetamine lab is where they make methamphetamine. It's an extremely volatile explosive lab. The chemicals in that are extremely deadly. And if not investigated properly and decontaminated properly, it can cause serious injury or death. A butane lab is an extremely volatile, flammable situation. Butane is used to extract oils from marijuana, which gives you a very high concentration of THC in the wax that is produced. It looks like wax. Sometimes it's called butter. And that's becoming extremely popular. So the clandestine lab training sponsored by the Drug Enforcement Administration is designed to train officers on how to safely enter these labs, document the evidence in the lab, and then bring a case to the prosecutor. One of the neat things, neat opportunities that I've had with this is there's only a handful of people in the eastern part of North Carolina who are certified to do these type of lab investigations. And one of the things we get with the partnership with the Drug Enforcement Administration is, if we come across one of these labs in this area, the federal government covers the cost to clean up the labs. So this is the equipment that is issued by Drug Enforcement Administration to anybody that completes the class and gets certified. So you can see the orange and the gray Tyvek suits are better for protection. We have the boots, we have oxygen tanks, the masks, some other safety equipment, along with some reference books that we use. So, you know, let's hope and pray we never see a lab in Dare County, but if we do, there's myself, one other gentleman from another agency, who, when we go to investigate these labs, this is the equipment we put on. You know, we're very fortunate in the Town of Manio that we're not seeing the drug problems like they're seeing in a large city. Are there drugs here? Absolutely there is. But with community help, community involvement, along with the police department and our state and federal partners, it's a problem we hope to contain. And that's why it's so important, when people see something suspicious, even how it may be very small, give us a call. Give us an opportunity to look at it. It may be nothing, but it may be something, and that's how good cases are started, with community involvement, people looking out for their neighbors and reporting things to the police department. We've got a great opportunity here with education, to talk with community members, to work with our state and federal and other local partners to combat the drug problem that is on the outer banks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to present that video to the board.
Good report. We're very fortunate to have someone like that aboard in the town process. So it's good that we have somebody.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we'll make sure to share that information. We'll put it on the town website, over our YouTube channel, social media, and it's also going to be running on Current TV, which will be under the cable networks here in Dare County.
Good. Public comment. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Would you like me to proceed to item number three on the agenda, or would there be comments from the board?
Oh, yeah. Comments from the board, always. Of course, they can jump in whenever they want to, in my opinion. Yeah. Any comments from the rest of the board, anybody?
I just wanted to say that's an excellent comment off the more. It's nice to know that you have that experience and that we have that expertise in our town. Thank you so much, Commissioner Selby.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, let's go ahead. Oh, go ahead, Christine. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to, even though I'm not there, I did want to say thank you to the staff. You know, I've not been there, I've not, you know, seen their department head reports in person, but I did just want to thank them for all their work that they're doing. You know, in spite of the difficulties that, you know, we're all facing right now, but just want to thank everybody for their continued hard work and continuance of services that we're used to in the town. And, you know, it just seems like everything goes on without a hitch, you know, regardless of what we're facing, that the town, all these town employees just come together and make it look seamless. So I just want to thank them, you know, for all that they do. And James, you know, please let us know if there's anything that we can do, you know, even though we're not all there all the time.
Thank you.
Excellent comment.
This Commissioner Darrell Collins, I'd like to show my appreciation to Josh and his crew for the excellent inspection that they had last month. They passed in flying colors with the water department. Josh and his crew does a very good job keeping us out of trouble. So I'd just like to give a special shout-out to Josh and his crew.
All right. Anyone else? All right, James, public comment.
Yes, sir. This is, this section of the agenda is for information purposes, and I'll go ahead and read the instructions for folks who are interested in commenting.
Yeah.
Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and your location so that your statements can be recorded. Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and check and see if there's anybody in the audience who...
Well, yeah. James, one minute. Is Richie, Richie, you on board?
No, sir. Commissioner Burke was not able to make the meeting, sir.
Okay. Well, you didn't tell me that. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. The, we don't have anybody present here in Town Hall, but I'll go ahead and ask for our listeners, for folks who are attending the meeting by phone, if you hit star nine on your phone, that will raise your hand, and our IT department head will be able to recognize you as raising your hand and wanting to make a public comment. And it looks like we do have one hand raised. I'll go ahead and read the last four digits of your phone number, and then our facilitator will go ahead, unmute you, so you can make your comment. So the last four digits of your phone are 1, 3, 0, 2. You will be unmuted now, and please feel free to make your public comment.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Andrea Tillet, and I am from Manio, and everybody knows me as Sweetpea. I have been a resident of Dare County all my life, and I've always been very active in getting the citizens of Dare County out on the streets, walking for exercise, and kind of ensuring them that their safety and numbers. And we've fallen short some years due to the non-maintenance of the sidewalks in the Town of Manio, because we've had several injuries. It seems like every year, someone is falling due to the crabgrass, the overgrowth of the sidewalks. And I had spoken, I had spoken when a person that was running beside me fell to Kermit Skinner some years ago about the situation, and never heard back from anybody. And then just, you know, recently, someone else fell. So anyway, I thought that I would raise this question, or, you know, kind of, you know, try and get some help on getting our sidewalks at least edged out like they're doing the rest of Manio. So we all exercise, a lot of us exercise at 5:00 a.m. around the town. And just recently, we've all almost had to actually go to Magseth, the monument, Turtle Pond, just different places that we've had to travel outside of Roanoke Island in order to prevent someone from falling. So I just want to, you know, put that out there on the Town of Manio's plate to see if we can get that resolved. And it's just been an issue for some time, and everybody's talked about it amongst each other, but I don't think no one's ever stepped up other than myself some years ago to someone else, and nothing got done. So I would, you know, like to lay that down and see what can come out. I don't know, you know, if it's all the town responsibility, or if it's the town and DOTs, but I would, you know, like to see if I can get a respond back sometime on if we can, you know, get those sidewalks edged out, and just make Manio, you know, in general too, and just make Manio, you know, look more presentable by at least, you know, cleaning up some of the main highway. So I think that's all that I got to say, and I appreciate everybody taking the time to listen.
Thank you, Sweetpea.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll continue to look up on the screen here. We do have, we do have several attendees. If there are any other attendees who would like to make a public comment, please hit star nine on your phone, and that will raise your hand here online, and we will recognize you. All right. We're not seeing anybody, I guess, and one more time, star nine, if you'd like to make a public comment for the record. Mr. Mayor, we're not observing anybody else.
Okay. Would anybody like to be heard? All right, move on.
Yes, sir. Item number four on the agenda, that's old business. There are two items here for action. Item number 4A is the zoning text amendment 2020-07Z to regulate boat lifts. This particular proposed set of amendments was originally generated by the Board of Commissioners and referred to the Planning and Zoning Board for consideration. The Planning and Zoning Board did review these changes, made suggestions, and they have recommended to the Board of Commissioners that they adopt these text changes and a consistency statement for the regulation of boat lifts. We did indeed follow the appropriate procedure and state statute in order, as the Board of Commissioners held its public hearing at its last meeting. In accordance with state law, we did allow the public an additional 24 hours to submit written comments, but none were received. At this point, the Planning and Zoning Board is recommending that the Board of Commissioners approve zoning text amendment 2020-07Z.
All right. Any comments from the board? All right. James, a vote is in order, is that right?
Yes, sir. We would need a motion, a second, and a vote to pass this zoning text amendment.
I'll move to approve zoning text amendment 2020-07Z to regulate boat lifts.
All right. And he made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. There's a motion and a second to regulate the boat lifts according to the zoning text amendment. All in favor, say aye. Take a poll, James.
Yes, sir. Will do. I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Selby. Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote for...
Motion carries.
Yes, sir. Item number 4B on the agenda. This is a second zoning text amendment. This one is 2020-08Z. This is to update provisions applicable to college, university, and community college campuses. This particular set of zoning text amendments was also referred to Planning and Zoning Board by the Board of Commissioners. We can confirm that the Planning and Zoning Board recommended to the board that they adopt these text changes and the consistency statement related to colleges, universities, and community colleges. This, in addition, this one was held in accordance with state statute and our town ordinance, including the public hearing which was held at the previous meeting. In accordance with the recent state law, we did allow the public an additional 24 hours for written comments. However, no such comments were received. In order to pass the proposed zoning text amendment, there would be a need for a motion, a second, and a vote.
Okay. You've heard from the town manager in regards to the text amendment alluding to the community college campuses. Can we have a motion?
I just have a quick question. Are there any complex issues with the current college that's being built with its proposed ordinance?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Mann, we understood that this went through both the Planning and Zoning Board, actually, the Planning and Zoning Board has heard about this twice now, and also went to Park for review. And interestingly enough, we found some very favorable reactions to it as a second time it came through Planning and Zoning Board, and Park had some really nice comments to make. They did have a couple of suggestions. One of the colors on the siding, which the county has agreed to. They're also looking at one of the other colors. But so far, the information we have gave it a positive reception at the last meeting at which they made the recommendation.
All right. Any other comments? Can we have a motion?
I'll move to approve zoning text amendment 2020-08Z to update provisions applicable to college, universities, and community college campuses.
All right. Is that Eddie?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've heard from Eddie. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it, Mayor. Betty Selby.
Okay. Seconded by Betty. We have a motion and a second. Take a poll, James.
Yes, sir. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Selby. Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Burke is absent. So, Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote for this amendment.
All right. We have a motion. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Item number five on the agenda, this is mayor and commissioner comments. This is for information.
All right. I don't have anything except one thing. This is still complicated to me. I apologize to all of you. I'm doing the best I can do. That's all. Let's go. Christine, comments?
Yes, sir. You're doing a fine job. I don't, I don't have anything really. I did want to expand on what Sweetpea was saying, because I used to be one of her members of her run-walk group in the morning, and I can attest to what she's saying, and whatever we can do. It's been a long time since I've been out there on the highway there, but if we can get that cleaned up, you know, I know we've been putting forth an effort, the town as a whole has been putting forth an effort for keeping the streets cleaned and the litter picked up. So whatever we can do to keep it safe out there for, you know, for people that want to exercise, and people riding their bikes, and, you know, a lot more people out walking, so forth. So I appreciate, you know, whatever we can do to get that cleaned up.
Yeah. All right. Richie's not here. Darrell, comment?
I agree with Christine. Mayor's doing a good job with this problem that we got going on. He's doing good, Mayor.
All right.
Any updates on the town comment, Mr. Manager?
All right. Anything else? Okay, Jason.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Yes. Yes, sir. The, I appreciate, I was having a little difficulty hearing there, so I appreciate...
Oh, I didn't, I didn't make you. Go ahead, James.
Thank you, sir. In terms of the update on town comment, we are pleased to report the, we had actually our first monthly construction meeting. Obviously, the construction started weeks ago. We, in our meeting, in our monthly construction meeting yesterday, we met with the engineer, the contractor, and multiple staff members onsite, as well as in-person. We determined that the project schedule is, we are keeping in accordance with the schedule. The construction itself is proceeding pace. They're working on the grading activities right now. And they also have done things like erosion control, as well as tree protection for those four gorgeous trees along Budley Street. They also are, we had made sure that we've taken care of ordering the materials. The board here had authorized ordering of materials, such as the lighting fixtures to match what the town already had, and those types of things. That's already been performed, and we are proceeding in accordance with the schedule. As a reminder for those who are listening, that the goal for substantial completion of the parking areas is late February, and the goal for completion of the park itself is in April. So the park areas, we need a little, we needed some time as we moved from winter into spring for those planting materials. So, but we are definitely moving in accordance with the schedule, and we will keep the board updated at future meetings.
All right.
Thank you, Darrell.
Sounds great. Good question, Darrell. Jason?
First of all, I wanted to say, you know, I saw the decorations starting to go up on the highway, so I think all the, all that fluff we put up is more important than ever as COVID gets a little bit, we're taking steps back there. So excited to see that, and I know the Special Lense Committee has their first meeting on Friday. And then the other thing I was thinking, you know, the sidewalk, maybe we have, you know, because it is a lot of gray area, or maybe not so gray with the DOT as well. Maybe there's some opportunity for some of the worst part right in the middle, you know, is the construction with COA, and they start cleaning that up. If we can get them to stretch that out, it might be an opportunity to just have them do a little bit more work where they're already going to have to be doing some. Certainly worth the conversation. That's all I got.
Okay. Eddie?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'd like to thank the Public Works Department for doing the decorations. As Jason mentioned, I saw them in the bucket truck of the day. It looked very safe and efficient, a whole lot better than what they were doing before, and I appreciate.
Standing on the roof of a cab of a truck? Anything else?
Sure.
Okay. Betty?
Okay. I think everything's been said, but I echo what has already been said. I certainly hope that we can move quite quickly with the sidewalks so that it will not be any accidents, and I appreciate Sweetpea for sharing that with us. And again, thanks Public Works and the Water Department. It's been great. And I do welcome the two new employees. I know they will enjoy being part of the family of the Town of Manio, and that's it.
Okay. James?
Yes, sir.
James, I suggested, I talked earlier, but I'd like to, I think what would be appropriate is maybe you contact DOT personnel, you interact for the board, on the board's behalf, in regards to the sidewalks, and have a conversation with them, see what's possible and what's going on and everything. Or have you already done that?
I have reached out to DOT on several matters, and this particular one, especially considering the majority of the roads in town are DOT, I think that adds additional urgency to that request for a meeting. So I'll make sure to contact as quickly as possible.
Just handle it the best you can and keep us informed.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody?
This Commissioner Collins, James, this is for James. Somebody asked me today about the status of the Christmas parade. Is there going to be a Christmas parade this year?
No, sir. Commissioner Collins, the Christmas tree lighting, Christmas parade, and the New Year's Eve were all events that we had conferred with guidance from the state, as well as direct discussions with Dare County. And because of the crowd gathering restrictions in place, we would be unable to hold those. However, we do have, and for the listening public, if they go to manionc.gov, on our front page of our website, there actually is a link to the various holiday activities we're trying to do to help continue the holiday spirit, even if we can't gather several thousand people like we did in the parade. And there are activities there that are for businesses, for residents. They include everything from our making storefronts bright for businesses to home for the holidays for residents. And we do have some random drawings for prizes in each of the categories. We even have some fun categories like performance, where folks can sing carols, show how they do their Christmas trees, dancing, so that we kind of recreate some of that joy from past events. We also, we had a lovely visitor into Town Hall who is helping us. We are making sure with... We are making sure with, with the help of the, uh, the Fire Department, Police Department, it is, we will be announcing soon that Santa will be visiting all the neighborhoods in town, and we're coordinating that, and we'll make sure to get that out on social media. And finally, we are doing some other things with Santa, such as letters to Santa, as well as a food drive that will go to the three food pantries here in town, and announcements will be coming out shortly on that as well. So, we're trying our best to promote holiday spirit and, uh, keep things going, and some of it has already started with the storefront decorating. Some of the feedback on social media was very positive, as businesses are starting to get into this, and also the Public Works crew putting out things. So we are hopeful to promote a, a positive holiday season.
Thank you, James.
All right. Uh, James, when's our next meeting? December the what?
This is Jason, I just want to add, I was thinking as, um, um, on Darrell's comment there, and, and-
Yeah.
We were talking there, James, and you've done a great job of putting out all the information, there's so much going on. And I've been at, I'm sure we all have been asked a lot about the different things going on. I don't know if maybe, um, could work on like a simple graphic to go with that, because there's so much, and so maybe it's a little bit wordy, and people aren't getting to the meat of, you know, just, this contest is going on, just the name of the different things, and people can read the article and find out what the heck it is, but, um, just to say the parade's not happening, this, 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 this is, um, something to consider.
Yes, thank you, sir. And we were planning to put a graphic out with our friends at the Coastland Times, we're doing an insert, but I think it's, your point's well taken, in that we should take it beyond the newspaper, because not everybody takes the newspaper, as much as we do enjoy our, our wonderful colleagues in the fourth estate, uh, but even getting up in kiosks, and perhaps some businesses in other locations around town, so we'll, we'll find a way to spread the word on that in a way that can be accessible to everybody.
All right. When's the next meeting, James?
Yes, sir. That's December 2nd, at 6:30 p.m.
Okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you adjourn, this is Christine, I, I will not be present, um, at the next meeting, um, if possible, I may be, I may be able to call in, but I ju, I did want to let y'all know that I, I'm, I'm not going to be in town, so I won't be there anyway in person, but if possible, I will try to, uh, phone in.
The only thing I can say, Christine, be safe and wear a mask.
Okay. I will. I will, that's it.
I know you will.
I'm washing my hands like crazy.
All right. Can somebody make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll say-
All right, we got a motion, we got a motion and a second to, uh, adjourn the meeting, uh, the recess meeting of, uh, the Board of, uh, Town Board of Commissioners, uh, and we will adjourn, if it's all right, until December the second at 6:30. Take a poll, James.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
And Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.